Super blurry.
I know, right?
Is yours, is your guys' owl blurry at your offices or?
Uh, it's not very high def.
Yeah.
But we're also substantially equipped.
Yeah.
When was the last time you defted it off?
Literally before we started, I was sleeve out rubbing the top.
Good to go?
Yes.
All right, uh, let's call the order. It is seven oh two on January eleventh. Kay, could you do roll call, please?
Yes. Jay Engstrom?
Here.
Nicholas DeFrank? Is absent. Jeff Dablin?
Yep.
Nick Monsieur? Is absent. Kim McGee?
Eric.
Derek Moore?
Here.
Jess Robeson?
Here.
Cindy Suplesio? Is absent.
All right, thanks Kay. So then with that, we can move on to approval for minutes. The first one is in regards to the November ninth meeting, which last time I know we had an issue with who was attending if we actually had enough people who could vote on it. Is that? The case is again this time or?
We are good. I refer to Robert's rules of order and anybody can vote on any minutes in the prior meeting.
Really? Okay.
I stand corrected.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I've been wrong my entire career. I learned something new.
I did it wrong for a long time. Then somebody else corrected me, so.
We we started out with a pretty big minutes regardless, and then I don't know where the juncture happened, but they weren't there. There were other people.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm right. I feel like in the past, I don't know. I'm not sure. I feel like we almost have always just kind of. I'm not entirely sure, actually.
Well.
But anyways.
For the latest edition, we can.
Were there any comments on the November ninth? Minutes?
This was our really short meeting.
It was a very short meeting, yep.
Yeah, so.
Pretty much. Just turn it and shut it down.
I'll, I'll move to approve the minutes from Thursday, November ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Second and second. All right, Jeff made the motion. Jared seconded. All in favor? Aye. Uh, next is the minutes for December fourteenth, which was our last meeting. Uh, were there, are there any comments on the, on the minutes? Staff, thank you for putting it together.
Cool. Yeah, motion to approve the minutes from December fourteenth.
I'll second.
All right, Jared made the motion and Jess seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, next is public comment for persons not on the agenda. Uh, if anyone in the public has something to present to the commissioners, step up to the podium or raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. Or do we have anybody in the Zoom meeting? We do not. All right, with that, we can just move on to the next item, which then would be the continuation of the discussion on the letter of support for the CLG grant. I guess Jared, do you want to kind of? Re?
Certainly.
Introduce this, I suppose?
Yeah, certainly. So, um, you know, we heard you guys loud and clear at the last, um, meeting. You wanted a little more information background on this, so hopefully you guys feel like what we've, um, provided is a little more, but very quickly, so back in spring of twenty twenty-three, Historic Preservation Commission, um, requested grant funding to pursue this project, updating the existing design guidelines to address development in the Old Town Residences on District. Unfortunately, that twenty twenty-three grant wasn't funded. We got some feedback from the, uh, from the, uh, CLG representative, who encouraged us to reapply. So, um, this fall, we worked with Historic Preservation Commission to identify what would be their priority. We looked at two options, either a CLG or a, um, Design Guideline Grant Update again, or the other project would have been a, um, log cabin survey. The Historic Preservation Commission ultimately decided to move forward with a grant application for the Design Guideline Update for the OTR Zone District. And so in the memo, um, what we provided for you guys is kind of a summary of the two grant options that are available, the CLG Grant and the State Historic Fund Mini Grant. We're currently applying for the CLG Grant because in order of timing, that is the first grant, we were encouraged, if we were not successful with the CLG Grant, that we could submit for the State Historic Fund Mini Grant. So, um, what all that means is we're applying for the CLG Grant. If we don't hear, um, or if we hear after, um, uh, March that we were unsuccessful, we will prepare a state mini grant, um, request. So, um, what we included in the memo was, um, the Historic Preservation Commission's Letter of Support Request, as well as the draft CLG Grant. That draft CLG Grant Letter of Support was, um, approved by the Board of Trustees. Um, so they are supporting this. We also included the actual draft grant, as well as the two thousand and eleven Design Guidelines. So hopefully that gives you guys the entire picture. Um, and ultimately what we are requesting, or what the Historic Preservation Commission is requesting, is that the Planning and Zoning Commission supports them, provides a letter of support that can be included in the grant application. We are applying tomorrow with the grant, so, um, you know, tonight is kind of that opportunity. If you guys would like to support it, we'll ask Jay to sign the letter tonight. If you're unwilling at tonight's meeting to come to a decision, it's perfectly okay. And, um, you know, we'll move forward applying for the grant tomorrow and just leave this, the Planning Commission Letter of Support out soon. Happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Thanks Jared. Any, uh, any questions for Jared?
I don't think I have any questions. I did really appreciate, like, seeing the application, like, what was in it, like what we are doing and what we're, you know, asking for. It was a lot clearer, to understand exactly like what we were going for. And also seeing how P and Z would be related into the current issue as well. Cause if we were gonna send a letter of recommendation, it's just nice to know that we're also still gonna be involved in it. Just felt empty. We were like, yeah, sure. And then we have no involvement in it. So I do appreciate the amount of information that was shared with us. I didn't see anything specifically about. Maybe I just didn't read well enough. What they're doing is just offering a suggestion, correct? Like they're gonna come in and give us suggestions on how to improve our design guidelines? Or is it just for marketing historic properties?
The consultant or the role of the Historic Preservation Commission?
The consultant.
So the consultant will, um, lead the effort to, um, recommend new design guidelines for the OTR. So they'll kind of lead the public outreach with the Historic Preservation Commission, build draft design guidelines, and they'll prepare design guidelines for, um, Historic Preservation, Planning, Zoning Commission, and Board of Trustees review.
Oh, for all three of us, it's not going to just Historic Preservation? And then they make a presentation to it or?
No, so the, the consultant will prepare these guidelines and they will be presented to all three boards successively. So first, the Historic Preservation, who will recommend it because design guidelines also fall within the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission, will bring it here and make sure that these are recommended one way or another by the, by the Planning and Zoning Commission and ultimately be brought forward to the Board of Trustees for an adoption or not adoption of the design guidelines, based on what the community in each subsequent group believes. Hopefully we can find something that is adoptable.
Right. And this is just for blanket zones, right? Like any building in the HCC in OTR, or is this for, are we gonna have designations of certain structures and stuff like that?
So, so it will only be applicable to the HCC and the OTR Zone Districts. As far as, um, within the OTR, how that's applicable to development is part of what we expect this process to outline for us. So it could be anything from only projects that are structures of merit or adjacent to a structure of merit. It could be for any project in the OTR. It could be for only new construction or ADUs or some type of trigger point, but, um, I, I don't want to prejudge what the community has an appetite for. Because the community could come out and say, no, we only want this to affect structures of merit. We don't want it to affect every other, right, property in the OTR.
I guess that was more or less what I was asking, if there was a designation or not yet. That's a great explanation.
Um, I, I really appreciated just seeing all of the pictures of the structures of merit and just like a good reminder of like how many cool buildings there are in OTR. And then I also found the, the note in here saying that twenty-four buildings in the, the twenty-four buildings in the OTR were constructed prior to nineteen twenty. Sixteen of those properties have submitted for building permits within the last ten years. So it's like, you know, there there is, I don't know, I, I just, I find it kind of fascinating that, you know, there is a lot of money getting thrown around in Carbondale and that we do have some buildings that personally I would really hate to see get replaced with something that, you know, doesn't have the character that these old buildings had. Sixteen, sixteen, I mean, they might have just been like interior remodels or something like that, but that's a, that's a big number. Yeah, and so yeah, I guess I, I appreciated seeing that in there and I just, in a way, I kind of saw it as kind of like this is this is important that, you know, even, and you know, even what is being talked about really doesn't have that much teeth to it from, from what we're discussing at this point. But you know, at least it's a step in the right direction, in my opinion. But you know, I can't speak for the entire, the entire, uh, board here, so I guess, um, Kim, how do you, do you want to chime in on this at all?
Well, I can't talk very well, but, uh, you know, this has been a few years in the works where we've really looked over the UDC and, and really looked in depth and there's just not a lot of protection for historic buildings. And we're not trying to do anything extreme, um, but I really think it's a valuable effort, you know, getting a consultant on board and really, you know, looking at this because I think there are parts of this code that should be examined and, you know, talked about and, you know, see where we have some leeway. Because at the moment, quite frankly, someone could come in and mow down the entire town. You know, it, it's just, we've got some things worth saving, so it, it's a good topic for all of us to get onto the table.
Jess, I know you had a look. At the last meeting, you kind of expressed some concerns. Did this help with seeing more information? Did it help at all with how you feel about it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it really helped to have more information and more background.
Sure. No, that's great. Jeff, what do you, how, how are you feeling about this?
Yeah, I think it's great to go after the, the financial support. I think the idea of having missed the last meeting and missed the conversation, I was getting caught up via the packet and I thought it was really comprehensive. I, I'm in favor.
I mean, honestly, it doesn't sound like anybody's opposed at this point. I think it was mainly just getting a little bit more background information, it seems, and kind of understanding better what, what we're signing off on, but. Does anybody else have any other questions regarding this? Um, I mean, I guess do we, do you want us to vote on this or is this pretty much just, I mean, we're all in agreement?
Yeah, either way is fine. You guys could make a motion if you want to formalize it, but I think a head nod and thumbs up and just Jay, you feeling comfortable signing it based on what you heard, I think is plenty for us as well.
Sure, we'll just go with that. Okay.
Perfect.
With signing?
Yeah.
The motion? I mean, you saw how nice of a letter I put together.
It was very, 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 it's very true.
Chat GPT, how would Jay write this letter?
I want to make this one a clarification out here, like in the recommendation provided by my staff that says the P and Z should make a motion if we approve it.
Yeah.
Is that okay if we just do this or do we need to go and pick out these with this?
It, it's either way. It, it's a letter of support. I don't think we need a formal motion. If you feel more comfortable doing that, we can.
I, I don't think it's a serious of an issue. I just want to make sure that we're not.
It, it seems like the record will reflect that there was unanimity on this topic, so.
Right. Well, sweet. Well, then I guess after the meeting, I'll just sign away.
Perfect. Thank you.
I will write a letter of support to you.
Oh, okay. I appreciate that. You want to write it? Well, sweet. Well, then we're just kind of cranking through here. Uh, staff update?
Yeah, let's see. Um, first and foremost, um, Tuesday night, the Board of Trustees approved a resolution of substantial compliance for an annexation for one-one-one Main Street. I think I got the term right. Anyways, what that means in plain language is the Board of Trustees determined determination of compliance, anyways, they determine that the property that is proposed to be annexed is eligible to be annexed, but it does not pre judge an annexation or land use application. And the parcel we're looking at is at the end of Main Street on the east end. On the north end of the block, you have the Carbondale Clay Center. And then immediately east of that is a small, single-family residence, the Burke Holder Residence. Immediately adjacent to that is a seventeen hundred square foot largely rectangular parcel that was kind of a leftover parcel when, um, the, uh, railroad corridor was transferred to Raptor. This parcel somehow kind of got
snuck through.
parsed off and, um, it is not a part of town. You go out there, I don't think anybody could pick where the existing lot ends and that lot begins. You know, it looks like it's part of town, but they have submitted a petition for annexation. They've submitted a rezoning and land use application. So, um, just from a very high level overview of the process, that resolution basically started a ticking clock on this application moving forward. So, um, we are anticipating, uh, the entire package, the annexation, the site plan review, the rezoning, the conditional use permit, and alternative compliance and subdivision exemption application coming before you guys on February eighth for a review. The Board of Trustees have set a date for a public hearing on the application of February twenty-seven. State statutes requires that they set that date between thirty and sixty days after this first resolution has happened. What we anticipate happening on that date is the public hearing being opened and continued to March twenty-sixth. And no action taken by the Board of Trustees on the date for a few reasons. One, in order to notice the Board of Trustees reviewing the land use application, we'd have to send notice before you guys even see it. We don't feel comfortable doing that. And two, we want to make sure that you guys have ample opportunity to review this application, so, um, just when you see public notices in the so far son and information coming out, just want to kind of give you guys that quick overview. We anticipate a Historic Preservation Review on February second. So hopefully you guys will have kind of the recommendations from Historic Preservation Commission. Um, and the reason the HPC is reviewing it is the desire to rezone to HCC. From the current CT zoning, HCC requires a Historic Preservation Review, so, they'll review the application. We'll provide comments to you guys. You'll have your first review on, um, February eighth. If you feel comfortable, you could make a recommendation at that time. You don't feel comfortable, you can easily continue it to the second meeting, February the twenty ninth, I believe. And if you still don't feel comfortable, we could still have a third meeting on March sixth and nothing would affect the overall annexation process, but just want to kind of give you guys a quick overview of that so that when you're reading all the legals and the so far son, you're not shocked as to what you're reading.
And so they're actually, um, this is, this is more than just an annexation. It's actually their proposed site plan.
Correct. It's a comprehensive, yeah, land use application. Power code, our municipal code is set up is it requires any petition for annexation to be accompanied by a site development plan. And for Carbondale, that is a site plan. So we don't, the reason being, we don't want to just annex a parcel and then later find out what we want to do with it. We want to annex it based on what that development application is. And so for those of you around, when Eastwood was annexed, this process is very similar. Hopefully not as long of a process as, um, the Eastwood Self-Storage or Central Self-Storage, they're calling themselves now, was, but, um, it's a, it's a similar process. Yeah. So if anybody asks you about it in the, uh, supermarket, we have an active land use application.
So it's, can I inquire on that?
You can. I might say I can't answer that, but you're more than welcome to inquire.
So you also said it was a rezoning?
Yes, the application that has been submitted is annexation, rezoning.
So this is like a formality kind of thing, right? Cause it doesn't have a zone, right?
Right, so.
Am I looking at the wrong quote?
No, yes and no is the answer, so.
So you will read this packet very well.
It is zoning and it's rezoning. So part of the application includes, the, the, the development application includes the parcel that's already in town, which is one-one-one Main Street. And so
Yeah.
They're annexing the additional parcel, proposing to combine the lots, rezone the two lots or the combined lot and have a site development plan that encompasses both lots.
Can you tell us, Jared, if they want to be HCC? Is that the, is that the idea?
The application is to rezone to HCC.
Okay. And the neighboring properties are still, uh, transitional or whatever it is?
Um, so with the, with this application, I believe that map is out of date because the properties in that, the north side of the one hundred block on the west side are already zoned HCC.
Except for the Dean Lot, right?
What's that?
Except for the Dean Lot?
Correct, the Dean Lot, and I believe, um, I believe, uh, the Carbondale Clay Center is not zoned HCC as well. Or they are, but the Dean Lot isn't. There's a couple parcels in that lot that are not HCC. This being one of them.
Got it, okay.
And the Dean for sure is not HCC.
Yeah, I remember that. Cool. And do we know if the Clay Center is, uh, going to apply for a rezoning?
So maybe the ones?
Yeah, they, so the Clay Center and the property on Second Street.
Okay, so it was the Clay Center and the property on Second Street, which are already rezoned HCC.
Thank you.
Yeah. We should probably get a new map back there.
Yeah. They refer to this.
And also one that shows Eastwood in, in town.
Oh, yeah, right. Definitely.
So yeah, more, more to come. Um, and though, you know, the information is up on our website, so if you guys have, you know, would like to look at the packet or the application before the packet's ready, you know, feel free to go to the current land use application submission and uh, the applicant has done a pretty good job at explaining what their request is.
Sure.
Sweet.
Thanks for the heads up on that.
Yeah, other than that, um, the, the only other thing is, you know, we appreciate you guys, um, adapting with us on some of the new meeting calendar updates. For those that are kind of like, what the heck? Why did I get calendar spammed? Essentially, essentially what we've done is, uh, you know, we're, we're still having the placeholder. The, the placeholder three month or one quarter meeting sent out, and so those will all be labeled hold. But on the Friday before the meeting, we will send out the actual invite for each meeting. And that's the one that we're hoping that you guys say yes, maybe, no to, or send an email follow-up after you get that. And so that's kind of our goal. We wanted to make sure that you knew what meetings were coming up for the upcoming quarter, half year, whatever that is, but we also wanted not make you all commit or think about that so far in advance and make sure that week of, we were kind of reaching out and saying what, you know, here's the calendar invite, so let us know if you can attend. So, um, just wanted to kind of circle the wagons on that and hopefully that is a workable solution for you all. Easy, yes, maybe, no, if you want to say that to the calendar invite. If you're, um, unsure, you know, don't hesitate to send us an email, follow up if you want, have some some more information. We're, we're hoping that people can tell us by Tuesday before the meeting, especially when we have, um, public hearings. It just helps us with letting the applicant know, um, especially out of town applicants, whether we have to cancel the meeting or we have a quorum. So, you know, there's a little bit of, of help with, with those applicants, you know, A and B Bank was an example. There was a mix of local, front range people, and if we can let them know by Wednesday, day before that they're, you know, the meeting is canceled because we don't have a quorum, you know, they certainly appreciate that. So, um, anything you guys can do to help us with that would be fantastic. That is all I have for staff updates that I can remember. Is there anything I'm missing? Is there anything that you guys?
Impervious lot coverage.
Impervious lot coverage, we are, um, gonna notice that, so that should be heading to the BOT shortly. Um, as far as upcoming code amendments, the BOT has initiated a codex amendment for impervious, or not impervious, like for inclusionary zoning. Um, so that will be the next, UDC code update coming your guys' way. They gave us some very, um, specific starting points, but I know that they want to hear from you guys, um, on But I know that they want to hear from you guys, um, on, is that right? Is there more nuance to the inclusionary zoning update? Um, so I would expect that probably end of February. For, for a public hearing, maybe first meeting in March, somewhere in that range. But that will be coming fast and furious. Sweet. Anything else? I'm good. I'm that's my case.
No, Jared, thanks for, thanks for just, uh, kind of talking about the, uh, the calendar invites and just kind of notifying you guys when, uh, if, if we're going to be able to attend, attend or not, I just feel like it's, I don't know, it's something simple that we can do for staff to just make their job that much easier. I agree. Because, I mean, yeah, if it's Wednesday and they don't know if we're going to actually have a meeting or not, and there's somebody supposed to be flying in for a meeting, that's just, that's, that's a lot to put on just these two. So, um, anything we can do to, even if it is, even if it is just like a maybe, like, yeah, I don't know if I'll be able to make it or not. I think that, that would help you guys, right?
Yeah, cool. It's, it's, it's certainly better than no answer. Um, at least then we, we have assured or people that we know we'll have to touch base with, you know, Wednesday or Thursday morning or whatnot, we can at least alert the, the applicant. So that would be lovely.
Totally. Sweet.
Created a reminder then every Tuesday before.
Appreciate that. And we're, we're going to play around with the, um, calendar invite, see if we can do a reminder built into that, where maybe two days before the meeting, it pops up as that reminder. So.
You can do that. I, I did that.
Okay, perfect. So, um, it's iterative, right? And then last thing, um, as you might have read in so per sun today, um, we have three vacancies coming up for the Board of Trustees. So if anybody's interested, don't forget to pick up your packet and get your, I think Marty said 40 signatures, even though only 25 are required. It never hurts to get more.
I got you. Okay.
Cam, I'll pick up your packet for you and I'll just get those signatures going.
Cam, do it.
Do you're leaving us?
David, how can you do that? Jared, you're so awful. No, no, no.
So I picked on you. But yeah, so, um, another thing that our town clerk has asked that we spread the word on.
Yeah, yeah.
So, spreading the word.
Spreading the word. Sounds good.
Um, yeah.
Well, cool. Um, Commissioner comments? You guys have anything for us? Jeff, Kim?
Not today.
Alright. With that, uh.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Look at that, early, 7:35.
So efficient. Thanks, Jay and Jared and Kim.
125-page packet. You would have thought it would take us way longer to get through every one of those pages, right?
There you go.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Jeff.